Iminetrentai Shetina Leslatuwa Nguan is back from recess. Good afternoon, colleagues. When we last left off, our previous bill on 10-37 was moved to the third reading. We are now going to entertain Bill Number 12-37 COR. At this time, I will recognize, one moment, I want to hold that thought as a reminder to my colleagues, based on what is provided to us on floor amendments, please note that if anybody has a floor amendment, they must submit it to session drive at GuamLegislature.org. Does everybody have that? Session drive at GuamLegislature.org, okay? With that being said, Speaker Therese Terlahey, I will recognize you now on Bill Number 12-37 COR. Conseguemotnaputfutubot.
Sidoismasi. Madam Speaker, I've moved to place Bill Number 12-37 COR, introduced by myself, Therese M. Terlahey. It is an act to amend Section 60112 of Chapter 6C, Title 21 Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring prior approval from the legislature before purchasing or entering into a lease, license, or sublease of property owned by the federal government, foreign government or subentities thereof, for a term in excess of five years. Move that that be placed into the third reading file, and I would like to speak on that.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So for those who are listening, the bill adds one paragraph to existing law. We have existing law requiring legislative approval for the lease or other transfer of government of Guam property, so that the people of Guam can be informed, and of course, the legislature will concur in those transfers of government of Guam property. And we have procurement law, which authorizes us to lease private property, us as a government, to lease private property for our purposes, and of course, that goes through the whole procurement law process, which is, you know, open and transparent, and we have laid out very specific rules and regulations to follow in that process. So what this particular bill intends to do is to amend Section 60112, which is the section which requires legislative approval for the transfer of government property, or the lease of government property, and to add the following subsection B. Notwithstanding any other provisions of law, the government of Guam, its various departments and agencies, including autonomous or semi-autonomous agencies, shall not purchase or enter into a lease, license, or sublease of property owned by the federal government, foreign governments, or subentities thereof, for a term in excess of five years, without the prior approval of Ilaheslatuwa Nguan, or Ilaheslatura, by duly enacted legislation, which specifically authorizes a particular sale, lease, license, or sublease. Why I introduced this bill, Madam Speaker, was because we want a transparent process. We don't want agencies to go at their whim and make leases with the federal government that bind us, the people of Guam, for terms longer than five years, for purposes unknown to us, and on terms unknown to us, until after the obligation is confirmed. We want this to be a consistent policy for ourselves across the board, to ensure transparency in the government's actions when they want to purchase, enter into a lease, a license or sublease of property owned by the federal government as well. I think it's incumbent upon us, as a legislature, to ensure that if contracts are going to be negotiated on behalf of the government of Guam, that those terms are going to be best for the government of Guam. And in almost every other situation, that has been the purview of the legislature. But there is currently no law that says for the lease or sublease of federal property that they must comply with the procurement law, or that they must seek legislative approval, that they must let the public know what's going on. Nothing seems to be required. I think the people of Guam are absolutely entitled to be aware of what is being negotiated on their behalf, especially when it is not a policy where the legislature has said, "Go and negotiate that on our behalf," especially when it's going to tie the people of Guam for years, at a cost that the people of Guam should be able to bear, and should know what it is that they are agreeing to. Sometimes these leases come with other terms, not just money. The lack of transparency in these types of dealings has the potential to bind the people of Guam to long-term financial obligation without any checks and balances. To bring this situation home, I'd like to use an example. For example, there is talk in the media, and the governor has pretty much come out straight and said she is going to lease 102 acres of federal property, without any other additional information being shared, and that we're going to lease this for the purposes of building a hospital. Now, the legislature has come out in full support of building a hospital, notwithstanding the already estimated over $1 billion cost of that new hospital. But we are being told by the media that on top of the $1 billion cost, we will enter into a lease with terms unknown to us at this date, in terms seemingly that will never be known to us until the agreements are signed, because that's what we are being told, that the agreements are being signed. My committee held three total oversights on April 8, 2021, November 18, 2021, October 18, 2022, looking for information on the use of land, federal land, not yet returned to our landowners, original landowners. And the landowners testified that they had not been notified of any planning meetings regarding their lands, and felt bypassed in the process of planning construction of Guam's new medical campus on their ancestral lands. I would like to thank those landowners for testifying at these oversight hearings, testifying on this bill, and being here with us today. Many of them are here with us today. The 36 Guam Legislature's Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture also sent a total of five separate Freedom of Information Act requests in October 2021, April 2022, June 2022, October 2022, and November 2022 to the executive branch, including agencies, to seek information on this medical campus and the proposed site at Lalu in Mangilau, or Eagles Field, as it is commonly referred to. And despite media quotes to the contrary, the FOIA responses did not yield any lease or documents indicating specificity on the agreements with the federal government regarding the decision to enter into a 99-year lease, nor any document showing that the property would remain in the federal assets inventory if a hospital was not built there. Additionally, the 36, my committee tried to locate minutes of the Healthcare Task Force, or the 21st Century Healthcare Center Committee, relevant to discussions regarding the decision to lease a portion of Lot A7A and B Anderson Baragota Annex, that's how the military refers to this property, but there was a limited availability of documents made accessible to the public, and none of those documents were specific to a lease or the decision to lease a property for 99 years. No documentation or testimony was produced that distinguishes the benefits of negotiating a 99-year lease of federal land versus advocating the outright return of it through the current process outlined in the 2019 NDAA. GIDEA has stated in the past, and also testified, that the Lalu property in Mangilau is the proposed site for the medical campus, and that it was not listed as excess by the federal government. Yet, Madam Speaker, we have in our possession, we have distributed at our hearings, a letter from the Secretary of the Navy dated January 15, 2021, obtained through a Freedom of Information Act request that indicates that 102.20 acres of Lot A7A and B Anderson was, quote, and I'm quoting from the Secretary of the Navy, quote, "added to the list of parcels eligible for return to the territory of Guam," unquote. This letter also notes that his July 2, 2020 letter, quote, "previously added a 50-acre portion of this site to the net negative inventory, which will now be increased to 102 acres." There has been no other document obtained through FOIA or otherwise which rebukes this letter, and if that is in the possession of the government of Guam, it was not made available to us, again, through FOIA, through our oversight hearings, through GIDEA, through our requests, through land management, none. Portions of Lot A7A and B Anderson Annex, or the Lalu land, were included in the, this is the process, when the military agreed to net negative on Guam, they agreed to a specific process of land return, so that they would end up with less land than they started with for the buildup. That was their agreement. That's called the net negative. So they laid out a process in the 2019 NDAA, where there would be a request by the governor. The governor submits her request to the Secretary of the Navy to add parcels to the inventory maintained under subsection A, and shall specify in any such request, any public benefit uses or public purposes proposed by the governor for the parcel involved pursuant to the Guam Omnibus Opportunities Act or any other relevant federal law. She makes her request for land that they think is excess and should be returned. This list is compiled by GIDEA, given to the governor, and the governor either amends it or doesn't amend it, and sends it to the Secretary of the Navy as her request. The second part of the law states the consideration by the secretary. Not later than 180 days of receipt of a request from the governor, under Paragraph 1, the secretary shall review the request and provide a response in writing to the governor as to whether the secretary will agree to the request to include the specific land parcel in the inventory maintained under subsection A. If the secretary denies the request, secretary shall provide a detailed written justification to the governor that explains the continuing military need for the parcel, if any, and the date on which the secretary expects that military need to cease, if ever. And again, I want to remind my colleagues, in response to the governor's letter requesting 102 acres of Lalu land, the Secretary of the Navy wrote a letter saying that they were going to add, that they added, and they attached to their letter a new list, which included the 102 acres of land to be returned to the government of Guam. It's in the face of this that we hear the news reports and statements made by the administration that despite that promise by the Secretary of the Navy, we are going in and negotiating around these landowners back to let the military just keep the property instead. I hope I don't have to remind everyone that this is so contrary to the decades of work that the people of Guam have done for justice, to get our lands back, have them returned to the work that was done during the buildup process, to get that promise for the net This is just one of the examples, I see I'm running out of time, there's a lot more I'd like to say, but the, it's just an example of what we could at least have a say in. And I'm not saying we're going to say no to any particular negotiation, but I am saying that I believe the legislature should have a say. We should be able to look at it. The people of Guam, and especially the landowners, whose land we are talking about, should absolutely have a say in it. And that is the reason for this bill. It's going to require transparency. It's going to require that that be brought before us. It's going to require that the people can hear what the terms might be. And if we are brought along, this bill does not prevent it. It just says, do it in an open way. Do it in a way where these people in here, my 15 colleagues, who are elected to represent the people of Guam and speak on their behalf, and especially on behalf of ancestral landowners, for decades, that they have given that opportunity, Madam Speaker. So I'd like to ask my colleagues, please support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Anyone on the bill?
Sidoismasi. Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to, what I think I want to support on the main intent of this bill, 12-37 COR. And I want to share with you, Madam Speaker, that I do support what I think is the main intent of the bill, which is to ensure that the original landowners get their land back, period. If that is the intent. However, what I want to ask the author, after I finish my presentation, or while I work on my presentation, is if she can tell me today that by passing this bill, and this body, then not approving the lease for the hospital, whether it can confidently be said that the original landowners will get their land back? I say this, Madam Speaker, because looking at the back and forth between the governor and our congressman back then, and I want to say even with Congressman San Nicholas, the federal law, U.S. public law 106-504, requires that excess property be given to the government of Guam, but only, Madam Speaker, but only for public use. This law specifically says it cannot be given back to the original landowners. And I did have a document that was stated, that was passed out earlier, and it was noted on pages two, three, and four. Madam Speaker, the governor has met with the military leaders, who have communicated to her in no uncertain terms, that if the property is not used for a medical complex, it will remain with the federal assets inventory. Again, reflecting back what I wish I could work with, but this is documentation that is here. Madam Speaker, when I did my due diligence last term as the chairwoman on the Guam buildup, I want you to know, Madam Speaker, and to my colleagues, that I asked the same question and got the same answer. And this is what, if we do not build a hospital on the Eagles Field land, the military will take back the land and will not give it back to the original landowners. As I understood, DOD will use the land for a missile defense system. In public statements, JRM leaders revealed that while DOD was open to the use of property for a new hospital, because it would also support military operations and be subject to stipulations for specific features, the 2022 NDAA tasked the Missile Defense Agency with identifying architecture and acquisition strategy for a 270 million comprehensive missile defense system that can be filled in Guam within 10 years. You know, Madam Speaker, Rear Admiral Benjamin Nicholson then stated that the property identified for the medical complex will probably not be considered excess anymore, to support the contemplated missile defense system, which will require multiple sites. After this announcement, the governor met with the head of Missile Defense System, Vice Admiral John Hill, who reaffirmed the federal government's commitment to leasing the property to the government of Guam for the use as a site of a medical complex. And again, that was on page 12. So here we are, Madam Speaker. We saw with GPA, the Guam Power Authority, who was given a piece of military land to build a solar farm, and due to procurement protests, the military said it is taking too long, and we're going to take the land back. Now, if I'm not mistaken, GPA is scrambling to find land for a solar farm. Now, the land that the military was giving back to benefit the people of Guam is being used for military interests. And Madam Speaker, I must just note this for the record, in case nobody here is aware, and I'm going to say it, the China threat is real. And in late January of this year, a four-star Air Force general sent a memo to the officers he commands that predicts, and I really, really hope and pray that this doesn't happen, that the U.S. will be with war with China in two years. In the memo he sent and reported by NBC News, General Mike Minihan, head of the Air Force Mobility Command, said, "I hope I am wrong. My gut tells me we will fight in 2025." Madam Speaker, I know that that is a really, really rough statement, but those aren't my words. My point here, Madam Speaker, is we know the U.S. Armed Forces is preparing for a war. We see what happened with GPA, where what was once excess but not used for the reason it was deemed excess due to delays, the military took it back. So while I support giving land back to the landowners, and I, believe me, I do, I have a lot of relatives there, and even if I didn't have any, I would support giving it back to the original landowners. And that is why I was going to ask my good speaker to yield, and tell me for a fact that voting yes on this, only to vote no on letting the governor sign a lease for the Eagles Field, will result in the rightful owners of the land to get their property back. Madam Speaker, this is because between the governor, the admiral, the example of GPA, and the current geopolitical dictates otherwise. If the author can give this assurance on record, that the landowners will get their land back, I think, I think the better alternative is that the people of Guam get their land back, instead of it going back to DOD for a missile defense system. And I say that, Madam Speaker, with a really heavy heart, because as we look at the defense and the freedoms that we have today, but more importantly, having to protect that, we as policy members have to be really, really sure that the freedoms we live today are safeguarded. And as I personally, again, me personally, wanting to see original landowners own that, where do we go from here? And how, and I know that's a heavy question that I asked, about can this be affirmed? I don't know. But I do know that when you look at documents that are provided with us, to us, and we look at what's being said, and we look at what's happening today, we literally have to make sure that the freedoms we live today are safeguarded and protected. We need to make sure that the decisions we make today will rest assured that the freedoms that are set for us, that that is safeguarded, and that we will continue to be free. But, Madam Speaker, I say this because this is what has been going on, and things that have happened in the past, some of those decisions that have happened with all the ongoing military and all the assets that Guam has had, and now does not have in their property, those were decisions made way before our time. But I want to make sure that when we do it, we do it right. And yes, and yes, in my heart, I want to give the original landowners back, but if we cannot give it back, it is important that there was a discussion made, that at least having that medical facility there would be another place where our people can go to, to receive the medical attention and care that we have all been promised for, for many, many years. So for me personally, it's, I'm wanting to know where the commitments lie, and what is being done, and what is being set, or has been set, that is down in black and white. So from my heart, I support the intent of giving the original landowners back, but is it is that ours to give and say, based on what is already negotiated before us? Before our time?
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Speaker Terlahey, do you yield to the question?
I'm going to ask for a moment's recess.
We are in recess.
We are in recess. We are back from recess. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes here, recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And after, thank you for giving me the moment's recess. And I was conferring with the good author of the legislation and hoping that she can also share a perspective based on the inquiry that was posed. And I appreciate the time that she's afforded me. So I would like for her to see if she can yield to the question. Sina Massey.
Thank you. Do you yield to the question, Speaker?
I'll yield to that question. And I want to thank the previous speaker, the Vice Speaker, for those questions. I mean, those are some profound questions for us as a people of Guam. And in particular, she points out that we do live under a threat, an actual expressed threat, not just the one that we face from other superpowers targeting us because we have, the military has built the bases here on Guam, put their nuclear capacities here on Guam and other things. But it's the same threat that our original landowners face. Give us your property because otherwise you are going to die in a war. Isn't it? Isn't that what decades of senators and congressmen before us fought and said, "We are going to fight this no matter what"? We determined that that was unjust, not fair. The compensation was not just. And the threats were overwhelming. And they made the landowners act in fear. And really, they had no choice, let's face it. And so whether we control return of the land, I can face that reality that I, as a senator, cannot give the land to the original landowners. If I could, I would. I can't. But I can hold the military to their promises of net negative. I can hold the Secretary of the Navy to his promise that it is excess land, not necessary, and should be returned. And I can hold our current actions to those before us, the ones we praised during Mes Chamoru for standing up for us, jumping over fences to prove the point, that no, they will never give this to us willingly. They will pass laws and laws that says it's illegal for us as a government of Guam to give it back to our ancestral landowners. They tried to tell us that about a lot of things. And if we acted in fear of them, we would never have returned anything. But we didn't. I'm so proud of those before me who did that despite the threat. And we've always had that threat. And I would suggest we still live under that threat with the properties that had previously been returned, that the military is going to come in here and take them all back and that they're going to come in and take more when they need more. And they will take our waters and prohibit use of our waters when they need them. So this is really not a debate about our powers versus the militaries and whether Congress is going to move or not. It's really just what are we, as a local government, going to do? What are we going to require our agencies to come down here and show before they on their own enter into leases with the federal government? And it's because of our unique history. And maybe if we didn't have this unique history, we wouldn't care who enters into what lease. But we have a very unique history of land takings, one that I hope no one in here can forget. And that's why maybe an extra process such as just the simple one of just get legislative approval. Just show us the terms. And do what we do with everything else. Show us it's a great deal for Guam. Show us there is no other way. Show us that we gave up on return of that land. And we're going to lease it back. They took it from us and we are going to lease it back. When this tried, they tried to sell us Fena back and the legislatures before us were down there protesting. The governor was in here in his State of the Island address telling us, telling them, "No way. You give it back." And then they wanted to dictate the terms of when we bought the property back, what we could use it for, and that we had to take care of them at the same time. We talked about the GPA lease. The military was not returning that land. They were leasing it temporarily to the Guam Power Authority. And when Guam Power Authority couldn't build their solar farm there, the military did what it is going to do when we lease land from it. They are going to do whatever they want to do when the terms of the lease can no longer be fulfilled. They will use it however they want and keep it. It's theirs. And that's why I brought into the picture today that we should not allow any process in our government that's going to weaken our demand for return by authorizing leases left and right. I think that's what we do. It's like the new, it's like a, you know, it's subtle. But it's, you know, years later, they're going to look at us and say, "That's what we did." We may not be able at this moment, and particularly the legislature, to give it back because we are not the ones who write the letters to the Secretary of the Navy and say, and requesting the land. We are not the ones who the Secretary of the Navy's saying, "This is excess. We're going to give it to you." We're not the ones who say when it is returned to us, such as the USO properties and other properties on Guam that is being returned to us. It's not the legislature that says, "We're going to keep this land and use it for this purpose versus that purpose." That is all executive branch. But the legislature did, in its capacity, do what it could do. And that was, right, a new law that says that lands that the government of Guam did not need to keep were going to go and be distributed to ancestral landowners. That's where we are. And yes, we've moved, you know, we have a delegate who's pushing to make it very clear, express that we are allowed to give, the government is allowed to give it back. But I say, are we just going to let them prevent us? There's so many things, you know, when we act out of fear. And I just don't think that the government of Guam today needs to give up its rights to get land that is excess returned versus having to lease it back. And if we can't, we're not the ones who decide whether to give it to the landowners. We have put into place systems that can decide that, weigh out the benefits, the costs, the risks. I think every landowner who has returned property to date knows that that came at great risk and they use it under great risk. That's the nature of our status. But I don't want us as a legislature to act afraid. I don't want to act like, you know, we have to allow things otherwise they're going to take it again. They own it. They hold it. They, you know, they prohibit us from using it. And, and just, you know, I just say in face of the threat into this one particular property, which is really not the subject of the bill, but, you know, I understand the discussions on it are very relevant. If they have threatened that they need it for missile defense and other purposes very, you know, at the same time, that we're having all of these discussions. But yet, what we read in the paper is that they are going to agree to lease it for 99 years. And 99 years is significant to me because 99 years is two decades, two lifetimes. It's like, maybe one lifetime for some of us, those with good genes. But it's, it is, to me, the epitome of excess. It's the epitome of you do not need it. And I have no objection, again, to cooperating with them in every way that we can for mutual benefits. But we don't know the benefits, if they're mutual or not. And that's, that's really the gist. It's like, let's see. Let's see, so that we all are going to have to face future generations and that we can do that with, you know, straight conscience. Sisus Mas. Thank you for yielding, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes here, recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, as I'm looking at this legislation and seeing what is before us, I literally want to reiterate that there are two options in front of us right now on this area. It is, it is looking at a DOD missile defense system or a healthcare campus. I really wish, Madam Speaker, and I know I have a very little time, that I wish there was an option C. And I wish I could ask the original landowners what they really want, right? But that choice to giving it back, I don't know. I almost know that it won't go back. What are we up against? So I know that if we go down this arena knowing that we can be assured that there would be at least a healthcare campus looking to benefit the whole island of Guam or having a defense missile here, literally, how do we go, how do we work this in? Should we ask the original landowners what they want? And what are we going to get? Because I would love to give it back to them. And I want to say that I believe that the original landowners are there. And in my heart, I would love to give it back. But the options in front of us are real. The threat against us is real. Where do we go from here? What do we do? And where do we work it together? So, Madam Speaker, I want to say that I support giving the land, the original landowners what was rightfully theirs. But if that option is not there, which of the better two would be provided for our people as a whole? So I had to bring that up, knowing that I have documentation and as the former military buildup chair, that these documentations were provided to me and I had to bring it up to the forefront. So this is what I'm faced with as a policymaker, where do we go from here? Or do we really have that choice of giving it back to them? So, Danko Lina Sisus Massey, and I appreciate the author's responses to this also. But more importantly, the opportunity for the people to know that we are really up to trying, to knowing what is really going on on our, on our island here. And where do, where do we have the opportunity to provide for all here on our island? So, Danko Lina Sisus Massey, for giving me the opportunity to share what information I have that's on record.
Sisus Massey, Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Senator Duaneus, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of Bill 1237. But in order to qualify or quantify that support, I would say maybe, we have to go back in time. In fact, I think one of our colleagues on the floor, when he speaks, will probably be speaking of this point in time to where this whole controversy came about. Madam Speaker, over the course of the last several years, there's been a discussion about a new hospital, which developed into a medical campus, a dream, if you will, drawn up predominantly by the executive branch. And if things move forward, it came to the surface that a particular piece of property amongst supposedly others that were considered became the prime area for various reasons. When original landowners saw these presentations that excess land would be given back to the government of Guam, but then saw that it was sequestered for this idea, they were outraged. I won't say they were outraged necessarily because they don't believe in the prospect of a medical campus or a new hospital. But it was process. Madam Speaker, over the last several decades since the introduction of the Trumoa Land Trust Commission and discussions of returns of properties, there has been so much confusion. And I think that's what gives rise to a lot of this. There has been so much confusion on who gets lands returned, what lands are issued for public use, what lands supposedly had reversionary clauses but yet have been returned, Madam Speaker. And so therein lies a lot of the confusion. Now, when a certain bill was introduced in the last term to try to establish some compensatory mechanism, the speaker talks of the many hearings that she held during the last session in the 36 Guam Legislature. What was demonstrated over and over again, Madam Speaker, and I said it then and I'll say it now, was bad faith. If, as one of our colleagues has mentioned on the floor here, the absolute determination was made that the only identification of this excess property, 102 acres, we never saw a declaration by any individual representative from the federal government that it was going to be for a medical campus or we're not giving you the land. I've never seen one document, one letter, one scribbled on piece of paper that said, "We will give you this for that purpose or we will retain it." Because as the good speaker, Toulahi, said, "You can't take something back that you didn't give to begin with." Now, let's go back to the operative portion of the bill. What does the bill call for? The bill calls for what I've been fighting for now for the last three years, the people's voice to be heard on decisions that are made of this magnitude when there's nothing but confusion and bad faith that has brought up the ire of those who from the beginning just wanted answers. Madam Speaker, I talked to representative after representative after representative of individuals that came down to testify in the last session. And these are very pragmatic people. And these are very pragmatic people that were more upset about the process and the meetings that they had and bad faith than they were even of what is the probability and possibility going forward. They've already lived for decades having to have alternatives. They've already seen the confusion of who gets returned lands and who doesn't. They've already seen a land bank that doesn't operate with efficiency, or sometimes some would say accountability. And so, what I think this bill does is it gives dignity to the process to get all the information, to know the facts, and to not assume things. Madam Speaker, we sat here in the last legislature, and when the identification of the $60 million now being returned to the people of Guam as a reimbursement for here, going forward for all generations on the return of EITC monies, and we appropriated monies that we thought were available for appropriation for medical campus, and we know now that's not true. Because it comes to the government of Guam in full control of not the legislature making the appropriation. Those appropriations are dead. Why do I say this? We're worried about the fact that we don't have time to understand the mechanisms and to have a lease be approved by the people's house, by that process, because of the fact that we need to move. Everybody knows we need a new hospital. Medical experts have been saying that for over a decade now. There are other locations that were entertained from the beginning, but we're stuck on this one for the purposes of a campus. Now, we hear in media reports that it will be public health, because their funding source is put in place and they will be the first ones to build before the hospital. When only a little bit over a mile down the road, nobody knows what that building that they originally lived in, what's going to be the disposition. Many even speculate that it's fully refurbishable and functional. I say this because I don't think that we're up against a time barrier at this point. I think we're up against something that's been self-imposed. Because we made a decision, not in good faith, negotiated, and we don't even know, the people of Guam don't even know the terms of that negotiation. That, on its face, Madam Speaker, is bad faith. So, will this bill make any guarantees if it becomes law? No. The old adage, two guarantees in life, death and taxes. But what it will do, Madam Speaker, and the reason why I support it, it will bring good faith back to the process. It will bring negotiations that are open and that are done under the full light of And it will bring the fact that we don't have to make assumptions on what land can be used for or can't be used for, when there were no such upfront delegations to begin Now, let's speculate for some reason, that it does end up that there's a fundamental regard to a public purpose. Who is involved in that public purpose? How is that decision made? How is that decision made, once again, when we talk about a lease agreement that we have no details to? So, Madam Speaker, I just can't help but think, and I just can't help but believe, and I hope that this 37th Guam Legislature, and this bill starts that process, will truly allow the people's voice to be heard and not take assumptions and not make deals. If even only for that purpose, of course, there are dreams and there are opportunities, and there's many things that can happen going forward, but even if it was just for that purpose, it's the right thing to do, Madam Speaker. In the process, even just of talking about the medical campus in the last term, Madam Speaker, there were so many, even just on the idea of what that would all encompass. There were so many that were so upset about being in the dark. So, on its face, we can make assumptions. We can say what we think is going to happen. We can ask for guarantees. But, Madam Speaker, that will not change what the fundamentals of this bill is calling for. The fundamentals of this bill is calling for a process, a transparent process, a co-equal branch of government process, a negotiation with federal officials process that doesn't assume without evidence, not in fact, what are the terms. As I close, as the good speaker had mentioned also, because of a former life that I lived in terms of dealing with federal relations at the executive level, the real reason why the partnerships with Guam Power and Energy were negotiated with military and possible military lands is the military has a duty and responsibility region-wide to renewable energy, a goal they have to reach. And that placement of that opportunity with a government-to-government partnership was going to yield the credit that they required in order to be able to fulfill that. In the end, when it became cost prohibitive or for whatever reason that, that configuration didn't work anymore, it was not because of a takeback. It was because of a plan that could not see itself to fruition. That was the reason. I can't wait to listen to many of my colleagues and how they feel about this, and I will listen intently. But one thing I will not surrender in terms of my support for this bill, I will not surrender the fact that these things need to be done in the full light of day, not taking assumptions, not taking assumptions, to see the lease, to approve the lease, and to make sure every single soul on this island understands what that negotiation's all about. Sidoos Mas, Madam Speaker.
Sidoos Mas. Senator Duaneus, on the bill. Bill number 12-37. Senator Fisher, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. One of the things that when Senator Tulahe was speaking that caught my ear, and I was wondering if I might, I would like to ask Senator Tulahe a question.
Please state your question.
Yes, ma'am. My question to Tulahe, Senator Tulahe, is actually two of them. Is it, did I misunderstand, or is it the senator's impression that the governor or the governor's office did not comply with a Sunshine Act request as to the subject matter of this bill, or the transfer of Eagles Field, or the, the construction, or the construction of the hospital?
Excuse me, Senator Fisher, if you could repeat that first part of the question, because your mic was...
Not, okay. Ma'am, I would like to ask Senator Tulahe a question, and the question is, is it her understanding or impression that the governor's office or the executive branch did not fully comply with the Freedom of Information Act request relating to the matters under discussion here? And then I have another question. I don't know if you want to deal with him.
We'll start with the first question. Speaker Tulahe, do you yield to the question?
That's a very good question, and yes, I will yield to it. What I know is, of course, we sent the Freedom of Information requests. The information that we received in return, if anything, did not show anything in regards to the leases, potential leases, negotiations, nothing. When GIDA came in and they said during one of the public hearings, again, that this is the land, LALU, that's going to be used, we sent, we looked through their records and found nothing. But one thing that happened at the hearings that we had was, it wasn't just my office that was sending out FOIA's unbeknownst to me, but it was also others who testified that their FOIA's were also not, in response to their FOIA's, they had not received information regarding the land leases. One of them testified that, in response to one of their FOIA's, they received a response that said that, for example, GMHA was invoking the, quote, deliberative process exclusion to several FOIA requests. And, again, so, we may have received some responses to our FOIA requests, but none that showed anything in regards to lease. So, of course, I can't say whether they violated it or not, because I still do not have access to any document that describes this lease, or their meetings regarding a lease, or their, you know, parameters of the lease, the terms of the lease, anything in regards to a lease.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do have a second question, but with regard to that response, I think we would all agree that it's extraordinary, considering that we are encumbering, or not encumbering, 107 acres of property on Guam, and there are no memoranda of discussions, no internal memos, no WhatsApp conversations. And I would volunteer to help Speaker Tulahe, help Adaloup remember their obligations. The second question is technical in nature. If I may put that to Senator Tulahe.
Please state your question.
Yes, ma'am. The question is this. Under the bill, if the United States quit claims to Guam any property, must Guam get permission to accept the quit claim under the bill?
Senator, Speaker Tulahe, would you yield to the question? No, I don't believe that is correct unless there is, we are purchasing it, unless the government of Guam is purchasing that or making a transaction like that.
Understood. The reason, the reason for the question was, I think, we might want to shut the barn door on that one if the federal government just wants to quitclaim it. We don't know what the obligation will be. Just, just a thought. And, Madam Speaker, I don't see any rational basis why the governor wouldn't support this bill. It's nothing more than opening a window and letting the people see what's going on. And I rise in support. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Senator Fisher. Senator Chris Barnett, I'll recognize you on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too rise in support of this bill, Bill 12, and I'm very interested in the debate that's playing out here on the legislative floor. I followed this issue very closely, maybe a little too closely. When I was a member of the media, I too sent Freedom of Information Act requests. And the thing about sending these FOIA requests is they require a great deal of creativity. I'm lucky, my mother made me creative, because I was able to get the letter in which the Secretary of the Navy said that the Eagles Field property was added to the list of parcels eligible for return to the government of Guam. I reported on this issue. One of the headlines from November 8, 2021, "Eagles Field Included in DOD Excess Land Return, But GovGuam Could Keep It." Very familiar with some of the original landowners. I sat on a kitchen table with Elsie Flores and her elderly father, both of them suffering from cancer, both of them living in what some would call squalor on Chamor Land Trust And I got the impression that they were struggling to make ends meet, but that they were eking out an existence, selling rossetti, little things to make little money, because all the opportunity they had to make money off of land that they had previously owned, went up in smoke because Uncle Sam and the federal government took the land. So, I sat on that kitchen table with Ms. Elsie, and she unrolled map after map. I asked her if she ever went to law school, because I felt like I was talking to a lawyer. She was very well-versed, very informed, probably too informed for this administration. Probably makes them uncomfortable, but she knew what she was talking about. I listened as her father told the story of the land that was in his family, the land that they, they used to grow godla, zanfruta, the land they used to raise chickens and cows and goats. And when I listened to them tell these stories, it reminded me of the stories that my grandparents used to tell me about the land my grandmother's family owned in Radio Baragada. Everyone always asks me, "What family are you?" When I tell them that my grandmother's a Cabesa Flores, they assume that I must have land. And I correct them, "Oh, no, we don't have land." I'm surprised we're not Titan family, because we don't have land. We had land. Had land that we sold to the federal government. I saw the papers, something like two cents an acre. Some, and I wouldn't agree, would call that compensation. And when I sat there and spoke with Ms. Elsie and her father, I went to them because the governor of this island had spoken to the media about this issue, and had said to the media with much conviction that it was her belief, it was her belief that these landowners in Eagles Field had been compensated. Funny what we believe nowadays. Now, let me tell you, Ms. Elsie had some choice words for our governor that morning. Choice words. Show me, show me where, show me where we were compensated. Because they weren't compensated. They weren't compensated. Durum and jive. So many stories we're hearing about this, this excess land, this billion-dollar healthcare complex. And the only story I believe is the one that the original landowners are telling us. A previous speaker had asked the question. What if we don't build a hospital there, and the federal government takes this land back? What then? Well, I'll say that these original landowners want us to fight. They want us to fight for them. And that's exactly what we're going to do, most of us, anyway. And if we go down fighting, and the federal government does take that land back, because we took a stand, I'll be able to sleep at night. And I think they would too. And we owe it to these original landowners. We owe it to all of the, the great leaders who have come before us, who have stood in this hall, and others, who have stood up to the federal government, who demanded that we be treated equally. And I say we continue to stand in the memory of those leaders, in the memory of all the original landowners, and the memory of people like my grandmother's family. Maybe they were grateful, but more likely than not, they were duped. Duped by sophisticated people who maybe were more book-smart than them. And I'm just very bothered by this direction that we're, we're going in. When you have the United States Navy in the form of the Secretary of the Navy, writing that land is excess, very clearly, very clearly, in black and white, documents in black and white. Black and white don't lie. And when I, when I see these, I'm tired of seeing this. I don't want to hear it anymore from the administration on this billion-dollar healthcare complex. We support the building of a new hospital. Of course we do. Of course we do. We're the ones that have to go to Guam Memorial Hospital. Water dripping on our head, toilet that won't flush, maybe sometimes being served by a doctor who's wanted for something in another jurisdiction. Of course, we support the hospital. But when the governor's people came to this building less than a year ago and testified on the billion-dollar healthcare complex and the location of it, we learned that Eagles Field wasn't even the top choice to build the new hospital. It was down the list. So, it boggles my mind, and it angers me, that we continue to go down this path faster and faster. Lana, I bet at Adaloup right now, they're just waiting to sign that lease before we can debate and pass this bill. So they could laugh at us, and laugh at how, because of the enabling that some of these members in this body and others who have served in previous terms have done, enabling this administration to wield more power than they're entitled to. They're drunk on it. They're drunk on it. And you know, when you're drunk, you don't act right. So it's time to face the sober reality that these original landowners aren't going to go away quietly, and we're not either. This bill is also about loopholes. It closes loopholes that this administration, and maybe previous administrations, possibly future administrations, will drive their agendas through. 99-year lease, 50-year lease, and what, when the lease is up, what's going to happen? Is Uncle Sam going to bulldoze our billion-dollar healthcare complex? 99 years to, quote the speaker, sounds excess to me. Sounds more than excess. And let's talk about the threat of China. I was just asked by the media today, what is my opinion on deleting TikTok? Because China's using it to spy on us. So let's talk about the threat of China. If the threat of China is so real, that we're going to use it as an argument to keep these lands from going back to the original landowners, then why would we even build this billion-dollar healthcare complex in the first place, if the thinking is that it could be leveled to the ground when China attacks us? If the threat of China is real, then let's return these lands to the original landowners, and let them die on the property that was theirs to begin with, if that's what it takes? So I just ask that we, we stand up. It bothers me to the core, especially in Massamora, that we're here, talking about land back. And, you know, De Funtangat Santos told me one time, he said, you know, Chris, yes, it's the federal government, but we do it to ourselves, too. And that's what I'm seeing right now. Our own people, you talk about land back. In the words of the Navy, in black and white, the land is excess. We could get it back. But our own people are keeping it from our own people. And you talk to these original landowners of LALU properties, they tried to divide them. They had meetings up at Adaloup. But when I talk to the original landowners, those meetings didn't work. They offered money. The previous speaker mentioned the land bank. What land bank? And so I'm not okay when we, we talk about land back, but when our own people are keeping the land from us, that all of a sudden, we're going to be complicit, because we support the governor. This is not about supporting the governor. This is about ensuring that we, as a legislature, maintain our, our separate, but equal powers that have been eroded, often by the very hands that serve in this hall. We do have a legacy of fighting for the return of, of excess lands, of fighting for the original landowners. That's why this billion-dollar healthcare complex, and it really seems like the only people supporting it is the administration. You talk to the doctors, they want it here. Lilian Posada said, "Jotnia, chalampago," the list was long. This is about taking a stand for our people. That's what we're elected to do. Elected to take a stand. And whether or not there's a threat of China, I say we can still stand up to the federal government about this, and stand up to our own government, because that's really what it's turning into. Standing up to our own people and fighting for the return of lands that belong to our own people. Si dos mase, Madam Speaker.
Bueno, beto, Senator Barnett. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator Frank Blas, I will recognize you on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too stand up and support this piece of legislation. Must commend the previous speaker. Sounded like 20 years of media frustration finally coming out. But, you know, he made a good point. I have to agree with the point of the point that was made by, by previous speaker, a good gentleman, sitting in the back. What this bill really is, you, yes. Where you, where you from, Tom? Oh, the good gentleman from Ipana. Telefovo, we'll get that right. But what this bill stands for? It stands for our fundamental responsibility to be able to speak in behalf of our people and to defend. You know, I'm, I'm just wondering how confused that writer is with the Defense Department, who first wrote, this is excess, we'll give it back to you. Then he gets a message saying, no, we don't want it back, we want to lease it from you. And he scratches his head and says, wait a minute, you fought for decades to get land back, now you don't want me to give it back to you. In fact, you want me to lease it to you. And lease it in terms, in the terms that don't need the scrutiny, don't need to be questioned, or to be gone over with a fine-tooth comb by the same body, or the body that was constructed in a democracy to do just that. This is just as equal, this bill represents, is just as equal as what we're trying to get to the bottom of, and what we want to see happen, in that there's transparency, in that there's dialogue, in that there's communication with the people of Guam, most especially with the owners, the landowners, the original landowners. I could only imagine how they have felt when they got up in the morning, they collected the eggs, so they can go ahead and fry it or boil it, whatever they want, they made their coffee, they cut their cheese, they put it, they put the metakiza on the, on the, on the biskusu, they sat there and they opened up the post, and they found out that their land, there was going to be a hospital built on their land. And that there was a conversation about it with them. So if you think we're surprised, can you imagine them? Is that supposed to happen in a democracy? Is that supposed to happen in a government that we want, that our people want, us want, so that their, their rights and their freedoms and their voices are protected? I say not. But this bill is also in defense of what our responsibility is as a legislature. You know, one of the things I heard a lot, and I'm hearing often, is that this body, in order to be able to get information that should be shared with us, so we can get information necessary to make decisions, we have to FOIA it. Several of us in here were, were members of the legislature when we were called one time to a meeting. We want to work cooperatively. We want to be able to discuss things with you. We want to know how, how to work, be able to work together. Then when the doors were shut, that was it. You know, the time that we're spending right here, right now, could have been better spent in being able to figure out how we're going to be able to provide the funding necessary to repair the hospital that is needed to be repaired today? Let me bring this into perspective of a conversation that I had just last weekend with a family, distraught family, because they lost their loved one. You know why they lost their loved one? Because of sepsis. You know why, how their, their loved one got sepsis? Because he had a catheter on for three months that couldn't be taken out of his system, because the hospital didn't have another. A catheter. It's really hard to think about the joys and the advances that we're going to have in a hospital that's not going to be built for another 10, 12 years, when the need for the hospital is, is today. That's what we should have been spending this time on. But what we're doing today is being able to, spending time on trying to figure out how these decisions are being made, why they're not being made without us, and most especially, why they're not being made with the landowners who own the land where you want to put a hospital on. Sure, it's about a lease. But what brought about that conversation of the lease? It was brought about because you didn't have the decency to have a conversation with the people that own the land. And quite honestly, we can't blame the federal government on this one. This was all our doing. And goes to question. If there is already existing a clause in U.S. law that says, when the land is returned to the government, because it's excess, or they don't need it, and it's returned to the local government, and the local government can in turn use that land for best public use, why didn't we have a discussion then? Why didn't we have a discussion then? I'll tell you why. Because then they're going to have to own the responsibility of having, truly having the discussion with the landowners, and possibly the landowner saying no, or yes, we want, but we want it at this value. But they wanted it for free, at the expense of the landowner. So, I'll close this, and I'll put it very bluntly. Colleagues, any of you want to vote no on this? It's voting no on a process that our people expect us to go through. It's voting no on the sanctity of what this institution stands for. It's voting no against the people of Guam. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Blas. Senator Tadwe, you recognize on the main motion? Please proceed.
Si dos mase, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of this legislation. What I don't understand is that we have a law on the books currently right now. I believe it's in Title V, Chapter V, that requires anyone leasing property from the government of Guam over five years has to come to this body to do so. That means, that's economic growth. And we've had a lot of pushback from it. In fact, I had a bill that raised that from five years to 10 years. Fortunately, it didn't get through. Because I truly believe that accountability, transparency is very important. But we have to understand too as well. Certain projects take a little bit more time, little more investment to recover from. However, this is different. This is totally different in perspective of recovery. This has to do with the original landowners who own this property. It's a little bit different. Madam Speaker, I read an article in March 26, 2022 in The Post. And in that article, I didn't hear anything from the military, no quotes from the military at all. Everything came from the governor's perspective. January 10, 2023, in the PDN, same thing. Nothing from the federal government side. It was just from the perspective of the governor. And I'm sure we all know how well they're at when it comes to transparency. Wish one of us here could have at least been in some of those meetings to come back to our colleagues and tell us what was really said during that time. Also, what is the process that's put in place for the government of Guam to determine the return of lands? Or to determine what is going to be used for it if it was returned back to the government of Guam? There was nothing. I don't see a process. There is no process. The ancestral land was put in place two decades ago for the sole purpose of that, to give land back to the original landowners. But yet, where is the process? This is the time now, Madam Speaker, that we become more transparent. It's easy for everyone to say, oh, let's be transparent, but it's another thing when it comes to voting time. We not just owe this to all the people of Guam, but we especially, especially owe this to the original landowners. They need to see what's going on. They need to know step by step what's happening with their property. Whether it's going to be given back to them, whether it's going to stay with the federal government, they deserve to know. And this bill does that. We bring transparency for those original landowners who lost their land. And it's as simple as that. My good colleague from Baragato who said, a no vote. He mentions that if any of us here votes on a no vote, that we don't want that transparency. Well, I say, anyone who votes no on this bill is a slap in the face of those original landowners who at least, at least deserve that transparency. Because God knows, the FOIA is not working, so it's up to this body. Thank you, Madam Chair, or Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Tadegui. Senator Jesse Lahon, I think you had your hand raised, and then I'll acknowledge Senator Brown. Thank you. You may proceed.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker. Recogniza paray kwentus paguna talwani. Estame gaya manatsu oluguni, manwetunspud ti esti original landowners. Ungan magahit, tebi magahit esti landowners, manai tati ni tanunia. Lo otrupuntu esti lokui. Government and government of Guam and Malago, pofa manhatza hespatat. Madam Speaker, atanal uzung esti Guam museum. Manesita mapenta. Ni edzu tusina mapenta zapata gasta un bizon. Un bizon para tahtsa esti espetat, nitesina mapenta esti museum. Anan atan ulun guini gi itzalan, Marine Drive, atan holum guini, todo mafnas. Todo mafnas iliga. Zata famanhatza un bizon, nespetat. For Senator Duennias, confusion. Ungan, magahit, confusion. Confusionu nee, magahit? Esat, ma vaisenu, hazi shepa fama polu guini na logat, esti poma hatza gini lo gi Eagles Field, legnia. Guam Memorial Hospital. Public health. Behavioral health. Veterans. Esu vaisin, esapa poma tsogu ni esti sheyi. And pofa man, mapolu gi lu, esti espetat, public health, behavioral health, afapoma tsogu ni esti sheyi. And man gaigi pagu na building. Oh, tabia. Benti. A reuse. A reuse parafa? Tisina ma opit. Eku, kwantu esti tano zani kontori building. Te matungu tabia. Oh, we're working on it. No, vaisin. Sat tamano antipona itati i original landowners ni tanunia. Kupun bendi esti sheyana logat, zapona i original landowners ni edzi i salapi, and kupun bendi esti otsu sheyana logat. Tisina ma opiu, sat te matungu tabia. We're working on it.
You know, Madam Speaker, in my previous life in 1999, I was the Deputy Director of Guam Health Planning and Development Agency, which no longer exists, and it's sad because they do comprehensive healthcare studies. And I know we had a study, Healthcare 2001 and Beyond. And I, I can't recall, I know we, we, we did a study on, on healthcare delivery systems, but I can't recall the, the whether or not we addressed a new, I think we did address a new hospital. We got a new hospital. We got a private hospital, GRMC. But my point is, Madam Speaker, is this, a comprehensive study obviously has not been done. And the reason why I say this is because even doctors are not all in agreement on building this particular hospital or this healthcare center in this particular place. And that's why you see that most doctors live around the areas where healthcare delivery systems are, are had. Because they need fast access to, to these, these hospitals. There's clinics as well are built around those hospitals. Likewise, infrastructure is not in that place on the proposed site. And again, the, the question that we ask is simple. What are you going to do with these buildings if, if these existing buildings and agencies currently exist, that where they currently exist, if they're now going to be housed up at Eagles Field? What is going to be had with these buildings? There's no answer. Well, if it's going to be a reuse, well, then you're going to have, the government's going to have to calculate the, the, the cost of refurbishment of these buildings to house whatever agencies are, that are going to, to then now be housed in those particular buildings. Just last week, I asked the Chief of Police. I asked Chief, what's happening to your, your headquarters, your police? He said, oh, we haven't discussed that. That's not in the plans. I said, well, some of these buildings are supposedly going to be vacated to go to this new facility. So you can see that there's no comprehensive study put together because agencies that are needing their headquarters, agencies that are needing a permanent house as opposed to just renting a place have not been consulted. And a comprehensive study does all that. So on top of a billion, which is just the shell, and if this facility likewise is going to be the Mecca, as the vision says it's going to be, of healthcare delivery and not just Guam, but in this, this region, then you're going to have to have, again, the state-of-the-art equipment. But not only that, you're going to have to update constantly this equipment. You're going to have to have staff that you, that needs constant training. Doctors, nurses, therapists, and what have you for these facilities to be able to compete against where our people now go, the Philippines, now in Taiwan or Thailand, wherever it may be. That's a cost. So a billion is really not a billion. It's more than that. And so the confusion comes when you say, well, yes, we're going, we're going to house it there, we're going to build it there. But really, can, can a missile defense system coexist with a hospital? I mean, we can't even open a bar next to a school, let alone a missile defense system, let alone a defense system right next to a hospital. So, Madam Speaker, again, yes, do we want a new hospital? Yes. We like that. Why can't we work with GRMC and have a public-private partnership with them? They need a new wing, build it next to it, additional to it. The infrastructure is there, building is there, you have expertise over there. GMH can co-house, be co-housed over there. But again, it goes to show that a comprehensive study hasn't been, hasn't been put together and that true, and a true price tag is not put together as well. And the unfortunate thing, Madam Speaker, is this, is of course, the original landowners, it seems to me that you're, that we're just trying to find an argument after an argument not to be able to give these lands back, lands back as well. Because all these arguments, all these things are not making sense. As Senator Chris Duennias has said, confusion. Confusionu nee? Samaga ahit, padapapola, missile defense system, punit espetata? And so we are ill-prepared, Madam Speaker, for such a ginormous facility. Not just that, but the cost. And like I said, all we have to do is just open these windows here and look out, look at our neighbor. The Guam Museum. Paint is faded. Tourists are out there, the ship, this shipping line just, it just, just came this afternoon, tons of tourists out here looking around the museum. Yeah. Todo mafnas ipentura. And we're ready to build a $1 billion hospital. Let che. I, I, I've been just like, really? Really? And I, I, I'm just, you, you're not serious, are you? But again, Madam Speaker, it just goes to show that we're putting forth arguments that are not justified, there are arguments that are not well-studied, arguments that are not put together. And likewise, we're going to have to rent, and, and we're going to have to lease, it's going to be given to us to lease? Give it back to original landowners? Let's lease it from them. If the conditions are, well, you have to lease it from the original landowners, then yes, okay, deed it to them with the conditions that they'll lease it to the government of Guam. But that's not even part of a study. It's just we can't give it back to them. Tisina tana itati ni tanunia. Well, I mean, I have, I have a big concern that if a facility that big as well, and these big agencies and hospital settings basically, well, I guess, I mean, that's their version of, well, maybe they're downsizing government, they're, they're going to get rid of security at GMH and just put a missile defense system. No more hospital police. We're just going to put a big missile over there. That boy, if you try to get in, you see that missile, boy? Going to press the button, boy, and morte ya, boy. Just hope there's not more than, I mean, there's not more than one because that one missile is only for one person. So, Madam Speaker, I rise up in support of this bill. Again, it's, it's needed. It starts us off actually with a, a serious concern, and if in fact, if in fact we're serious about healthcare facility being housed, we need to do a comprehensive study because all indications are, is that we're still working on it, we don't know. And these are just basic questions, Madam Speaker, basic questions that cannot be answered. So again, thank you. Sidozmasi, ni naidi esti na apenarat. Barakwintupu esti na bill. And again, I stand in full support of this bill and the authors of this bill. Thank you very much, very much. Sidozmasi.
Buen pobeto, Senator Lon. On the main motion, Senator Joanne Brown, I will recognize you. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Certainly, a lot has been said with regards to this bill. And all the previous speakers that have spoken have risen in support of this bill, and I too also rise in support of this bill. There's issues here, obviously, with regards to the land, and that's bothersome because you know, our agenda, and certainly in the years prior when I was in the legislature, our focus was always to try to correct the wrong that was placed upon our people with the land takings. It's such a sensitive issue. Because so many of our people lost their lands and certainly grateful for our liberation, but at the same time, you know, when you lose what is yours, what is your inheritance, and it's taken from you. And you don't even have the ability to pass it on to your children or your grandchildren. So you know, there are things about Uncle Sam we love, and there are some things we don't love so much. Land takings is just one of those things we don't love so much. What's bothersome, and some of our colleagues touched on that, is when our own people, that's even worse, commit the offense against our own people. And now we're pitting the issue of wanting to have a new hospital against the landowners, the original landowners that would like to see their lands returned to them. Considering the fact that many of the original landowners have passed on. And, and it's their descendants now that, that are hoping to have the opportunity to have these lands returned, because when it was taken from their parents or their grandparents, many of them never lived and have not lived to see the day to have that returned to them. We call that an injustice. And now we pit our people against our people because the administration is hell-bent on building this hospital, irrelevant of whether anyone else in leadership here agrees with it. People of Guam, please listen, it's not so much those of us that are speaking in favor of this bill. It's gonna be the silence of those that may not vote for it. Because as I mentioned last term, you know, I didn't run for the legislature to work for the governor. Especially when we see bad decisions getting made because of those that align themselves with the administration, whether it's good or bad, because that's what the governor wants. I've never understood that, and I've worked for a couple of administrations. The governor has almost, you know, considering I've served with her many terms, so have you, Madam Speaker, in the Guam Legislature. And I've seen the least amount of engagement with the legislature, when she herself has sat in, well, not in this hall, but the hall down the street that we used to have, standing in line with us in many ways in opposition to the administration about the very things we're arguing about today, about the lack of transparency and engagement and collaboration. And, you know, here we are beginning the second term, and I don't see anything different. I'm sure if she had it her way, we'd be totally out of this discussion. Because she's definitely taken the opportunity, use this federal money and decide how it's gonna be spent without letting the people of Guam know exactly how all this money's being spent on their behalf. And the money she's put aside for the new hospital, what's gonna happen if she's not able to build it where she wants it, when she wants it? What happens to all that federal money intended for the pandemic, intended to help this island recover? You know, as my colleague there from Baragada had mentioned, we got an existing hospital that's had a whole list of issues and problems that need funding and repair. How many times have we not had the money to address the medications? How many, to goodness, last term, we're depending, you know, putting money aside to hire specialists that we don't have? I mean, the list goes on, I mean, we saw the videos of, you know, gosh, for how many years was, you know, water leaking through the roof and the elevator every time you go there that's not working? The perennial problems that have existed with regards to healthcare on our island. And we should be looking forward to positive discussions. If we're looking at building a new hospital, how do we, how do we improve and make it better for our people? And that's not what's happening. Now we have to worry, are these decisions going to be made and commitments going to be made on behalf of the people of Guam without the people of Guam being engaged in it? Are they gonna end up with a bill that they can't afford to pay? Building is one thing, and that's a pretty penny. How are you gonna maintain it? How are you going to staff it? How are you gonna have, generate the money to continue to operate it? And that's just a hospital. But now we have the grand plan that we must have public health included in this facility. We must have behavioral health included in this facility. I love the veterans, my dad's a, my dad was a combat veteran in Vietnam. Served 24 years in the US Navy and retired honorably. Hundred percent disabled. American veteran. I love the veterans, I'm a product of one. But we throw all that in the pot, and then we say, people of Guam, this is what you want, because that's what the governor wants, that's what the administration wants. Irrelevant of the landowners, and we watch how they're doing this little tap dance of trying to get around this and say, oh, we're gonna lease it, we're gonna, the fact that we're even saying we're gonna lease land from the federal government is insulting. We're gonna lease our people's land back. There's no way to get around that issue and say, oh, that's resolved, and we're just gonna ask Uncle Sam, we wanna lease our land back from you, because we wanna build a hospital. And because we wanna build a hospital, that justifies why we should build it at this location. Which I'm sure, I'm not even sure I agree to the location, you know, it's close to my neighborhood. Because I wanna know what the cost of infrastructure is going to be. What's the bottom line? What is all this gonna cost us, and how's it gonna be paid for, and how are we gonna sustain it? When historically, we have not been able to do that with the existing public hospital that we have now. And colleagues, you know, those of you who have been around the corner, you know that this infusion of money that we have gotten is not going to last. The ARP money is gonna dry up and disappear. And the additional revenue we're getting, yeah, we, they, administration brags about that when they come down here, they must think they must have the Midas touch, they must have golden fingers. We just had to wait, the people of Guam just had to wait for them to get into office to make it happen. Because, boy, they can do it like no other. Because our people have gone through, and the world has gone through, the misfortune of a pandemic. And because we happen to have the buildup of a military base. And yes, you know, the contractors are rolling, the projects are rolling, the money's flowing, and we know it's gonna come to an end when that base is completed. And yes, oh, we're gonna get more military personnel that are gonna be paying into Section 30. Even with the, if it's up to 5,000 or down from originally 8,000 Marines to 5,000 or 4,000, how many Marines are gonna house up there at Camp Blas? It's still less than what we had in the 1980s in terms of military presence on Guam. We've seen the downscaling that has happened. We remember BRAC, we were here for BRAC, some of us. And is it gonna pay for all this wonderful government we've given the people of Guam as we continue to raise the cost of government? It's one thing that's grown during the pandemic is government, the government of Guam and the bottom line of what it's gonna cost our people. I, I don't know how our people are gonna pay for all this that we wanna give them. And to make such a big decision probably on the single, single largest project to be undertaken, and the most expensive in the history of the government of Guam. And yet, the only ones that are engaged and wanting to make decisions on this to the exclusion of everybody else is this current administration. And if we, who, you know, I always say this, we go to the people of Guam, as, as we all did a few months ago, and tell the people, you know, we're here to serve you, please vote for, can you please, people of Guam, spare that one vote just for me? Because I, I really wanna serve you. I really wanna make sure your quality of life is better and the education of your children and your healthcare. Gosh, anybody can write that political script. And then we get in here and, now we'll see what happens. Because it'll be interesting to see if we get 100% of votes of this body on this bill, or are we gonna divide? We're gonna be divide 9-6? 10-5? We'll see. As I told the last legislature, when we abdicate our responsibilities, we're not doing our job here. When we acquiesce, I do, I'm dumbfounded by this, and like I said, I've worked for two administrations. You know, we just cave in instead of doing what's right. And we know when it's wrong, we all know what's wrong, but I don't know what it is. Some of us, because we've compromised ourselves, we have favors, we have connections, we have contracts. But we don't tell the people of Guam that, that, keep that to ourselves, hopefully, hopefully nobody finds out. But I don't think we can proceed as irresponsibly as the administration wants us to in moving forward, signing a lease, because we know that this particular thing is focused on there, there's no other property we're looking at right now, other than the intended purpose of this, this, this land that's being occupied by the federal government. And there's so many other options we can do, because I, I don't have a problem building a new hospital. I think there's so much more modern benefits, like, gosh, remember the old, gosh, the old naval hospital up the hill? Remember the hallways were so long you could roll a bowling ball? And now to see the newer facility and what the benefits are that have come with that, certainly, we wanna see that for our people. But I don't necessarily agree on all the other price tag items we wanna add on because we wanna feel, you know, build this majestic complex that I don't know that our people can afford. And then say, oh, but you know, you're denying the people the best. No, I think it's being realistic, and, you know, let's build what we can afford and build what we can come to consensus on. I don't have support for the proposal the administration's putting through. And that they're intending hell or high water, they're gonna deal what they want, whether we want it or not. But for any of us to sit here and abdicate our responsibility and acquiesce to the administration for whatever your reasons may be, that's wrong. Our job is to ensure how the public purse, we have responsibility over the people and the public's purse, and how that money gets spent, and how that money gets invested. And we have to deliberate that among each other. That's the public process, that's the democratic process, and hopefully, we can come to consensus collectively on how to do that. But to have those decisions just simply made down the hill, that's why we have, you know, that's why we have the democratic system. You don't ever leave one person in power, you know, as they often say, if you wanna know what someone's made of, give them power and see what they do with it. See what they do with the power. You know, it's ironic, because the governor herself, when she used to be in the halls of legislature, used to fight against the administration vehemently. We used to be here criticizing Uncle Carl down there, oh my God. We were there holding the walls up against Carl Gutierrez. And I, now we're on the hill, it's a different story, poor Carl, you know, let him battle GBB, but we're gonna do it the way we want it. Now it's the, I'm governor, I'm gonna run this place to hell with everybody else. What the heck is it? Is the air up there a little different, little hill up there at Adelou? We need to do the right thing, and we need to make sure that when we have these big discussions that involve the people's money, because it's not our money. We need to be open, and we need to be public, and we need to be transparent, and we just can't talk about it and say that's what we're doing if we allow this to move forward. I think the governor needs to know what the sentiment of the people are. And that's our responsibility here in the People's House to represent their concerns and their issues. We don't agree on everything, but we can't allow this process to move forward. And I agree, you know, my other colleague here, yeah, well, probably, yeah, they're trying to rush to get that lease signed before this bill gets up there to be vetoed. But good luck to the governor, I hope she finds the federal government to fund the whole thing, because I don't know how she's gonna fund it if she doesn't work with the legislature. And she's done very little of that unless she's done it through back doors, but she's certainly, I guess, since that meeting that happened a year and a half ago, when the media got kicked out and the governor said she was gonna work the, I don't know, has anything changed since then, colleagues, for those of you that went to that meeting? Any more enlightenment, any more engagement since then? I don't think so, but you know, if you know more than me, then let me know. But I support this bill, Madam Speaker, I think we need to do the right thing, and I think when we make these big decisions, these big money ticket items, any ticket item with regards to government expenditures, it needs to be made openly, honestly, and with deliberation and engagement. That's our job here, and we should never abdicate that responsibility, especially when we go to the people of Guam and ask to support them, have them support us, that we're there to support them in their interests, and then when we get in here, we acquiesce to the administration. That's not why we're here, that's not what we're here to do. We should be here to do the right thing. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you. On the bill, Bill 13-37, I'm sorry, 12-37. Senator Kanata, you are recognized.
Good afternoon, colleagues. You know, zao ba e supporti estina priniponi. Lo ezigi i questiona angin sinihe tanai i tanonia, naiya huzung. Poria tu tin, tinah nisasiita mas i tautauta. Lo angin timangana estina priniponi ekwa. Lo idzoku malagohu pona na maoleki eslata chuka hafa na priniponi. Za angin gaigi medical campus pa ngaiigi gi GMH tamuning debi tanah bansa mo'na i eslata i familata i famagonta. Ezigi naman malagohe, no? So, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, at the end of the day, we really wanna see a better healthcare facility, and we wanna see a better alignment for our island, our people, and our kids, and the next generation. So, you know, if, if we can really give this land to the people, then give it to the people. If the governor does not get this land for the hospital, then I hope that these people do not work, wait, or, or have to work the legislature to get their lands back in 24 hours. Give it to them, sign it over. Because I appreciate the individuals who have came today, whether you have interest in the property or not, I thank you for coming out here. Your commitment, your passion, and your interest in this property is always important, it's imperative for us to make decisions. And although the decisions we make today are gonna be challenging, whether we support the federales, but we support the, the Magahaga, all our, all our decisions here are gonna be challenging. But at the end of the day, I hope it's our general, general consensus that we do our best to serve the people that we work for. And again, I, I, if, if we get this property back, I hope that these people get their property within 24 hours. If we lease it back, we, do we do, we do lease backs for all the properties in Tamar Land Trust, 99 years. There's legislation out there to, you know, extend land leases, extend leases, period, for the reason of financing purposes. No investor, nor bank, or any group will ever invest for a five-year term. It's insane. And among that sentiment, it's an investment for our people. The only thing I know that's five-year lease is a car, or loan is a car. Trust me, I know, I own like seven cars already total. So, you know, I, I really, I really applaud the author for this legislation, and I applaud the people here who are committed and passionate and have interest in this land. I myself have had land taken from me, and I applaud the Senator, the late Senator Angel Santos. And you know, the, the quotes that he's always made is that generations shouldn't face the same challenges as the previous one. So I hope, again, that if this property is given back to the government of Guam, that it be used for the hospital. If not, then unfortunately, the black and white is black and white. And we, we, you know, I, I love my freedom, and that, that, this, this legislation has nothing to do with what we, we want as a people and our freedoms. The freedom we need to be fighting for is our, our, our status. Decolonization, that's where you fight these problems with the feds, is in DC, not amongst ourselves, and I hope we can agree to that, colleagues. That's imperative that we fight this together in DC. And with that being said, I thank you guys. And thank you for your time, Madam Speaker. God bless.
Thank you, Senator Kanata. On the bill, Bill 12-37. Sponsor wish to close?
Yes, and I, thank you, and I'd like to thank my colleagues for their words on, you know, in regards to this bill, some questions, some very impassioned statements, some history, all of it. I think, I, I love the debate like this, that really helps to enlighten all of us. Before I go into my closing, I would like to just make one floor amendment, I thought it was sent in, it's a one-word change on page two, line 13, so it might just have been sent to the clerks now, my apologies, I thought it'd been there a long time ago. It's to change the word sale to the word purchase. So it's a So it's, uh... It's talking about authorizing a particular purchase, lease, license, or sublease instead of a particular sale. So, it's that one-word change. The clerks have it in writing, because we've sent it to them, they just haven't made copies for everyone. So I would move that we consider that amendment without it being passed out.
Are there any objections to allow us to discuss the amendment without a physical copy at this moment? No objections. Please proceed, Madam Speaker.
Yeah, so that's the amendment, to change the word "sale" on line 13 of page to the word "purchase."
On the amendment, are there any objections? Hearing none, amendment passes.
If I could just confirm, I have the correct line number, according to the clerks? Line 18? Eight? Oh, my apologies. If I could redo that floor amendment to change the word "sale" on line 18 of page 2.
Line 8 of page 2.
I'm sorry, line 8 of page 2, instead of the word "sale," to put the word "purchase."
Yes. On the amendment to change the word "sale" to "purchase" on page 2, line 8, are there any objections? Senator Titegui.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the amendment, I just wanted to make sure, because the word "particular sale" on line 8 is also further down in, on line 20 on the same page. Would this need to be changed as well? That's my question.
Does the author yield?
Actually, I'm going to withdraw the amendment, Madam Speaker. I think I'll just withdraw.
On the withdrawal, are there any objections? Hearing none, passes.
Thank you. I hope the intention is clear with the original language, clear enough. So in closing, I would like to just remind everyone who's listening that the bill is a very simple bill. It's a one-paragraph bill that requires that any sale, lease, license, or sublease of federal property by the government of Guam, that that's going to require legislative approval if that transaction is going to extend over five years. It's very simple. It's going to require legislative approval. It's not a bill to determine where the hospital will be built or whether the hospital will go forward. It's not a bill that's going to determine whether these landowners are going to get their property ultimately. It's a bill that allows for transparency. And one of the people testifying in our hearing was Royce Palomo Comacho. And said very clearly, "When I hear resistance to this bill, it makes me curious about why these parties feel so opposed to legislative oversight. We need legislative oversight so that we do not have a situation where a governor, for example, pursues the planning and development of an unreasonably large and expensive legacy institution without collaboration with elected lawmakers, without informing the essential landowners or making the public aware. This is just an example. But my community can see how this bill may be similarly beneficial in other circumstances and scenarios. And we need to be sure that these island-altering decisions are not being made solely at the discretion of one or a few who feel offended by criticism and now have a personal vendetta to see their plan through." I don't want this to be anything personal, maybe I shouldn't have the ending part there, but it's not personal. It's, it's a... It's what we always do as a legislature. We want to review these transactions, these huge transactions that have financial implications. And in this case, actually might have more than financial implications. They might have implications that require what we're going to put into our hospital, how we're going to build our hospital, how many floors it might have, who's going to be served at that hospital, and that type of thing. And... So, one of the previous speakers discussed about, do we have choices here? You know, that we only had two choices here, and that was, you know, to allow them to use it, that we're going to lease it as a hospital, or they're going to use it as a missile. No, I don't think those are the choices that we face. The choices that we face are, are we going to demand transparency on leases of property from the federal government? Where we're going to pay them, or we're going to give them some other compensation for use of federal property that was originally taken by land, from our original landowners, without knowing? You know, are we going to demand transparency on that? Or are we going to allow that to go through without us in the legislature knowing any of the details? Without the public knowing any of the details, without original landowners knowing any of the details? One of the other choices we have is, are we going to continue to, on the course that previous legislatures set for us, to demand return of land to the government of Guam and to original landowners? Are we going to continue that? Or are we going to allow some other process to be used that avoids a demand for return of excess property, allows excess property to be used by the government instead of returned to the government of Guam? And this is a policy that is being proposed for one piece of property, but may be used for all lands. And I want everyone to think about that, right? That's why I'm trying to do a bill that is general, that will affect all lands going forward, all of these types of transactions going forward. Not just this one piece. All land, all landowners. Also, you know, there's been a proposal that, why don't we just pay off any original landowners that might be affected? We pay them off so they are no longer interested in return of their land. Well, I think they've tried that in some cases. And these landowners made it very clear at the hearing, they want their land returned. In the end, if there is no other choice, what we have done when we, as a government, have had the land returned and then decided we needed it for an airport, we decide we're going to pay these landowners. That was something we put on ourself. That's something that we're putting on ourself, and we might be putting on ourselves for all other land held by the federal government. But it's like the war claims, where we said, what, the federal government's not going to pay the war claims? Oh, but they're going to authorize us to, or allow us to use our own money to pay for war claims? Are we going to now authorize local funds to be used to pay landowners? Because the government of Guam decided not to demand return of that land. I mean, I just think, at the very least, these are huge policy shifts that should be discussed by the legislature. And in the interim, instead of allowing leases to go through without any review that might impact those policies and those policy changes that we could at least allow review of those particular leases. And I know, you know, the bill affects land leases of federal property, not the particular one. However, you know, the response is justified. I use one example, because it really shows what happens without transparency or without public discussion of these things, without a consensus by the branches going forward, without questions being answered as to what's going to happen in this case or that case. What are we going to be tied to? Not just in terms of costs, but what particular stipulations? So I just think this demanding to know what parameters we're going to be bound by, and not just us, but by all the people of Guam and their children, and maybe their children's children. Just like we do for bonds, because we know how long those are going to bind us. This is to prevent 99-year leases from binding us, which is much longer than bonds, to terms that we know nothing about. And I don't want that process to undermine what decades of legislatures before us and governors have advocated, have put into policy, even the courts. Even our judges have said, even despite the use of the, you know, or the Congress's discussion regarding public use, we have local judges who said that the transfers of property that have been made, they met that standard, local, I mean, public use. And that the public law that was passed by generations before us, or previous legislatures before us, that that is, that was, that outlined the public benefit, the public use of these properties. And so I think, I just don't think this is the time to give that... To give that up, to give what so many before us have sought, what the people, I think, still continue to believe is just. And I don't think we need to give it up in order to build a hospital, that we can do both. We can pursue return of land, we can pursue the building of a hospital, we can pursue benefit for all the people of Guam. And I don't think we should feel threatened or act in fear, or that we have no choices in this. And I think we should maximize those choices and continue to honor, honor our pursuit of justice. So I want to thank my colleagues again. Oh, I want to make one more motion before the end out was to add cosponsors? Sorry, where did that go? If I could add, again, the hearing on this bill went very long, but it was a beautiful hearing, I thought, because we had the landowners come in and testify. We have their testimony for the records for future generations to see. We have the people, you know, making it very clear. In fact, all of the public testimony was in support of the bill. So I'd like to add the cosponsors, those who stayed with me during the hours, hours-long hearing. Senator Frank Blas, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you for helping me through that hearing and helping and supporting the landowners through that hearing as well. I'd also like to add Senators Chris Duñez, Tom Fisher, Jesse Luhon, Telo Titegui, who've also supported this bill on the floor today. And so, and Vice Speaker Tina Munia Barnes. So, like to... And Senator Roy Canata. Yes, sorry. Yeah. And thank you, again, colleagues, for your support. It was massive, Madam Speaker, and I renew my motion to place this bill on the third reading. Oh, sorry.
Chris?
On the motion.
We will dispose of your floor amendment first. On the amendment to page 2, line 8 of the bill to change, oh, I'm sorry, we withdrew that. To add cosponsors to the bill. Hearing no objection. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Speaker, you are still recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to renew my motion to place the bill on third reading as amended.
On the motion to place the bill on the third reading file, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, so colleagues, we have one more bill on the second reading file, but I'd ask that we recess, and Monday is a holiday. I'd like to come back, though, Tuesday morning, 10:00 AM. And hopefully, if the bills are in gross, to vote by then. So we'll do that by motion at that time. But at this time, I'd just like to move to recess until 10:00 AM on Tuesday.
On the motion to recess until Tuesday at 10:00 AM, hearing no objections, motion carries. We are in recess. I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Guam history and Chamorro Heritage Day. Be but Chamorro.